I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Moving on to item number seven, Head Start, we've got a slew of things and Mr. Bowyer's name is after all of them.
I have a slew of things, fortunately for all of us, I will not be taking us through most of them. I will go ahead and talk about our in-kind expenditure and our two regular monthly board items, and then I will turn it over to Ms. Miles and Ms. McCarty who are here tonight to take you through the rest of it. Nothing worse than listening to me. So, Appendix C, our Head Start monthly expenditure report, as you can see, we're about 10 percent, getting the year started. This is our first month, last year, or last month, we ended our fiscal year with the pre-K system, it's a little different. So, we're doing good, as we always are, right on schedule in terms of our expenditure report. And our next item, Appendix D, our enrollment numbers. Oh, that's our outcomes report. Oh, wait a minute. Ah, Appendix E, sorry. Ah, okay, our enrollment numbers and, let's see, here, what's this, our in-kind expenditure? Ah, okay, well, Appendix E is our monthly expenditure, Appendix B is our liaison report. Which isn't pulling up. What's that? Okay, I can't find my paper and I can't read that, but our enrollment numbers are still looking good, as they usually are for this time of year, three and four-year-olds, no two-year-olds, no one-year-olds, obviously no five-year-olds. So, with that, I will get into our in-kind expenditure report. Now, for every person in front of me, you guys know what in-kind contributions are. For the rest of the audience, in-kind contributions are contributions that have a monetary value. And because of Head Start, because of the requirements surrounding it, we need to assign a value to the gifts, for lack of a better term, that New Hanover County gives to us. So... So, as you can see, our in-kind expenditure has $626,000, $626,605.94 for school location. That is the value assigned to the classrooms that New Hanover County has given Head Start. And I don't know how they come up with that number, Shannon, maybe you can elaborate on that. I don't know what formula they use, but that is the value of the space that New Hanover County so generously gives to the Head Start program. They also have utilities, technology, maintenance, and HVAC totaling $714,433.43, and that is not an actual monetary contribution, it is the sum total of the in-kind expenditures. So, I'll take your questions on any of that. Nothing? Okay. Well, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. McCarty and Ms. Miles, who can take you the rest of the way in my name.
Again, I'm Dr. Karen McCarty, the principal at Dolly D Johnson Pre-K, otherwise known as your Head Start program. And I'm excited to be here tonight to share the outcomes and the growth that our kiddos did make this year, despite missing almost an entire month of school and being so young at ages three, four, and turning five. But we do want to make sure that we do prepare them for what is coming next, because it is a long journey from kindergarten through 12th grade. I want to start by talking about the six domains that we do focus on at the pre-K level, the social, emotional, language, cognitive, physical, mathematics, and literacy. And we do believe that those first four domains, social, emotional, language, cognitive, and physical, are the primary targets to ensure that mathematics and literacy can be attainable for our kiddos. So, we push hard on those four domains from the get-go.
Could you put those domains up, please, the next slide? Thank you.
And again, our learning is slightly different down at the pre-K level than it is at the K-12 level, so. All right, the next slide talks about the three-year-olds' growth by those domains. We're pretty excited by these. A lot of our kiddos come in strong at the three-year-old level with some social, emotional strengths and language development. I'm most excited with our growth in the three-year-olds for cognitive, math, and literacy. Our kids made great strides in some critical thinking skills that really helped in the math and literacy development. The next slide is our four-year-olds. Again, the standards get a little tougher to master. But again, super excited about the math, from a 15 percent beginning of the year to an 80 percent growth. Not where we want them to be, of course, we would prefer 100 percent. Our goal, our target was 85 percent proficient for all of our domains. But again, super excited with some of the things we put in place this year to produce these outcomes for our kiddos. The overall growth by domains for all of our kiddos, and this is inclusive data of all of our Head Start kids, our NC pre-K classroom, and our EC self-contained classroom, so I want to make sure I point that out. So, we did, we grew our kids across all domains, and we're super excited by that. Again, we still want to acknowledge that we do have room to grow, but we are excited with what is produced by our kiddos and, of course, our teachers. Point that out, go team. But I do want to point out the bottom three, cognitive, math, and literacy, those are those end domains that we really want to focus on after we produce those first four. So, we're growing. And again, literacy and math, we went from the low 30s to the upper 80s and 90 percent proficient across our school with our three- and four-year-olds and EC students. So, where we are from there, our accomplishments, 90 percent of our kiddos were proficient across all domains at the threes. Four of six domains for our fours were 90 percent proficient or above, and we're going to target those remaining two domains coming up next year with some of the things we have implemented for next year. Areas of growth, mathematics, one of our more challenging objectives was understanding spatial relationships, getting the kids to see what's coming in front of you, what's behind you, what's to your left, what's to your right. Literacy, noticing and discriminating wrong was one of our challenging ones, cat, bat, rat, getting them to understand the connection between those ending sounds by changing just the initial sound fluency. Physical, using fingers and hands to button, to zip, to open a milk carton, to, you know, eat, to open the spork packet. So, we're going to really try to strategically work with those domains of learning to ensure that what we are sending to the K-12 schools, they're ready. So, in response to this, we are going to implement some instructional dives this year to really look at our objectives. We had some turnover this year, and I want to make sure our new staff is ready and prepared to work with our kiddos right from the bat. We're going to meet weekly, targeting those objectives and what they look like at mastery. And that mastery is, of course, defined by the Head Start objectives. And then we are, we implemented some sensory pathways this year to do a little cross-curricular instruction. So, if you come to Johnson, you're going to see some kids hopping down the hallway, hopscotch to the letters of the alphabet, tossing coins to a letter, identifying that letter by not just name, but by sound it makes, some early math skills by pattern. So, we're excited by what's coming up next year, and we do hope you come out and see it in action. It's a little bit different when it's presented in numbers, but seeing it in action is great. Any questions? Shannon?
Nice job, Dr. McCarty. Very exciting for me as being the director, seeing that consolidated data, first year with having our TSG schools, which is progressions for all of our students. It was the first year to have implementation of our EC teachers doing this progression, so being a part of this process, so that we're tagging all of these babies. So, that's very exciting to see it inclusively. So, next, we have shared items that are mandatory by our Head Start funding. And one of those reports, it's annual, it's a PIR, it's a Program Informational Report, it's a snapshot, because the sucker's about 66 pages long, so we did the snapshot synopsis of the PIR for 18, 19 school year. So, the beauty of this is the data's been shared via through Mr. Bowyer, through our Head Start liaison reports, and then there's a little extra information such as teachers. Outstanding job, because we have BK licensed pre-K teachers. We've conducted all of our home visits and requirements for our family conferences, and we met our disability count, along with not falling below our 85 percent for ADA count. No errors and no concerns as far as reviewing the report many times. If we don't have any questions, next on our sharing item, that's mandatory, is our Annual Community Report. This is now in our new Head Start performance standards, and this is report, it's a snapshot of what comprehensive programs are coming together to deliver preschool services. So, we capture our shared Title I funds, we do our county funds, and we report on all of our collaborations with our partnerships within our community, and it's a one-pager, it's updated a little bit with our admin costs, well below what we're supposed to be at. Again, no concerns, but great shout-outs for our community and our Board of Education for supporting the program. This is outstanding.
How are you required to share this? Like, what do you do today? Just say, you know, report this, you're obviously reporting it here, but where else are you required to share this information?
Okay, so, we are required to publicly report it, and we put it on our website, and we share it, of course, at our board meetings, and then any other collaboration meetings that we have, we like to share that as well. It gives the community and people a better picture, the global picture of what we do. We're serving 875 students, and you get reported on 260, and smaller numbers, so it's bigger than what it looks like.
And what kind of feedback are you receiving by sharing this information? Have you gotten any, or are they just like, oh, wow?
I think within our entity, they're a little bit surprised on how bigger it is and what it takes to make it come together. And again, just reiterating what Dr. McCarty did a great job with, our learning domains, and highlighting that again. When we have folks that are not in the world that we're in, it's some of those partnerships that they were amazed by as well, so, and we can do better. Lastly, we have our annual written plans, and these are our blueprints, again, it seems like I just shared these, but it's every August. So, this is our roadmap of how we carry out our Head Start performance standards. So, it takes every Head Start performance standard that we have, and we talk about how we do it here in New Hanover County Schools. So, again, it's an annual report, that written plans that we share, that talks about what we do. So, if you want some night reading, this will tell you exactly what happens in Head Start. If there are any questions, thank again so much for your support and all the work that you do for preschool. Thank you so much.
Shannon, is that an action item?
No, ma'am. It was sharing only, and I'm sorry about that, Ms. Adams.
Ms. Miles, you share data that's Head Start data. That is very similar to our data that's in our preschool as well?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Interesting, because with the Head Start, we have three-year-olds, so we see it a little bit differently. With our NC pre-K, we have those moving on up, transitioning to kindergarten. So, no concerns with, you know, it's all progressions and actually exceeding. And also, what we did, Dr. Markley, is we generated some PD and some materials and things to enhance that, that was a little bit lower than what we're doing with our teachers. So, we're very excited, and soon we'll have some longitudinal data, too.
How's registration looking for here in a couple of weeks?
Very busy, very busy, but we're doing well. We have three openings at How Pre-K, and I think tomorrow morning that'll be buttoned up, so.
We'll start, we'll end up starting a waiting list.
It's exciting, exciting time of the year, man. Rocking it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, is that everything for Head Start?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Thank you for all that great information. All right, moving on to item number eight, A, item A, Dustin's Greenhouse, Appendix I, Dr. Markley.
This really is not my, not mine. It's, seems like every time we have an innovative program, we see some of the same faces here. It's great to see Ms. Felt, Jean Hall has been a part of this as well, but it's my pleasure, actually, to introduce Martin Green. Good thing about Wilmington is we get a lot of folks who move here from other places. He is bringing with him a program that he started in Greensboro, which is a really phenomenal program, and I'll let him talk about it.
Thank you very much. The name of our program is called Dustin's Greenhouse. Go ahead, move that forward if you would. Dustin's Greenhouse is a program for high school juniors and sophomores primarily. It cultivates hope and opportunities in kids' lives who are underserved and under-recognized. And who is Dustin? And 17 years ago, Dustin was, is my son, and he was graduating from high school, and my wife and I are big travelers, we love to travel, and we told all our kids that for high school graduation, we'd give them a trip anywhere in the world that they wanted to go. And my daughter went to Europe and backpacked around Europe, and my son came to me and said, "I want a truck." And I said, "You're not going to get a truck, you're going to get a trip somewhere," and we went back and forth and back and forth until I finally picked the trip for him, we sent him to the Galapagos Islands. Think he'd be thrilled, but he argued all the way on the plane and fought me hand and tooth, "Why are you doing this to me? This is supposed to be a gift, supposed to be my graduation gift." And it was really hard, as a parent. And the moment he stepped off that plane, I had a different child. He had totally transformed. And six months later, he was dead. He was a freshman at NC State and was in a traffic accident, we lost him. So, we started Dustin's Greenhouse, and it's an international leadership program. We usually, it's been, we've been going on with this program in Greensboro for 15 years, where we have principals and teachers and guidance counselors nominate students, and then we put them through an interview process, and then we select our team. That happens in October, November timeframe, and in January, we start a leadership program. We have, it includes, we include community service, and at the end of this program, or not the end, but in the summer, we go six months of leadership training, and in the summer, we take them on a trip somewhere in the world. Part of the leadership program comes from the Center for Creative Leadership that developed the leadership program for students, particularly for students, and this is the kind of the basis of it. Before you can lead yourself, you need to understand yourself. Before you can lead others, you need to understand others. So, we work to teach these students about themselves, and then how to lead themselves with goal-setting and those types of things. We talk a lot about their EQ, their emotional quotient, instead of their IQ, and how they can build their emotional quotient, and how emotions are what differentiate us mostly on the way we act in this world. So, we do a lot of leadership training, six months of leadership training. Go ahead. And over the years, we've taken kids to Guatemala, South Africa, Uganda, Romania, Peru, Belize, Mexico, Ecuador. We usually take them on a two- or three-week trip. This is a lot different than the trips you see that are the companies that do international trips, not only with the leadership component, but we offer scholarships to students. We really want to reach the kids who need this. And during the trip, we spend a lot of time talking about life and about things, and we challenge these kids like they've never been challenged before. We've hiked 44 miles through the Andes, we've put them in great shark cage dives, we, last year, last trip we went on, because we moved down to Wilmington, we took the kids out and they dehorned a rhino as part of a conservation project. They brought in a helicopter and darted the rhino and came out there, because rhino horns are so valuable, they are dehorning them so the poachers won't kill the rhinos. We'll be doing a lot of those things, same things, next year with your approval. We plan on taking the kids back to South Africa, and I've already got some amazing plans and some amazing things in store for them. The whole idea is to kind of get them out of their box and let them face their fears and try to overcome those fears. But there's some pictures in the PowerPoint of some of the kids we've taken. It's incredibly rewarding for me and my wife, we run the nonprofit. Right now, we're fully funded, so we're good with money, and we're going to have a lot of scholarships for kids, which makes me really, really happy, because those are the kids I love to take on these trips. Hopefully, we're going to be working with you guys, and I hope we can really impact lives of New Hanover County Schools students.
Tonight is for information, because there are some legal documents that go with this that'll need review, but I would like to bring this to, as an action item, at our next board meeting in September. New Hanover is going to be our school that does this, and Ms. Felt, you want to talk a little bit about what it's going to look like at the school?
Sure. So, hello, I'm Elizabeth Felt, I'm a teacher at New Hanover High School, and one of the programs that I help lead there is called the Bridge Program, and the emphasis of that program is on students who are often overlooked and underrepresented, which is aligned so perfectly with the mission of Dustin's Greenhouse. So, with our school and hopefully other schools in our county, other high schools, we're hoping to send students who fit that model, who would not have this opportunity unless we're bringing in an amazing community partner like this. For my students, many of them have never left the state of North Carolina before, so dreaming of them, to think of them as global citizens and provide this opportunity would be life-changing for them. And what I love about this is it pairs so well with the leadership components that are happening in my classroom. This would echo really nicely with the leadership training that's leading up to it. And what Dustin's Greenhouse does so well is after the trip, they really challenge the students to think about their communities, which services a huge part of our Bridge Program and our Honor Service Learning Program at New Hanover. So, this, everything that he's already done so successfully, Free Bird McKinney, who's the Teacher of the Year, he is the one who actually connected us, because he partnered with Martin in Guilford County. So, seeing all the amazing effects that have already happened there and bringing that to our district, I think would be powerful, not only for my students, but any student who gets involved in this.
I spoke to Guilford County Superintendent, and she had nothing but phenomenal things to say about the program.
Thank you. Where do you get your funding from? I owned a business in Greensboro, and for years and years, we've done golf tournaments, concerts, dinners, raffles, everything you can imagine. But in 2015, we sold our company, and my wife and I put a significant amount of money into the organization.
Is it Martin?
Yes.
Yeah, first, I'm very, very sorry about your son. And the only question I really have is, can I go? Because this is exceptional, I'm inspired. My family and I are travelers as well, and what you're doing for these young men and women is extraordinary.
Thank you.
It's extraordinary. Thank you.
If you'd have told me I'd be up here 18 years ago, I'd told you you're crazy, but God has a way of changing things for you.
Are you familiar with Hobie?
With who?
Hobie.
Hobie? No, no.
It's out of Raleigh, Hugh O'Brien, that played Wyatt Earp when I was little. He started, and it's Hugh O'Brien Youth. But they have, it's not anything like this, but they challenge kids, they have meetings once a year at NC State. They bring in about 400, 500 kids from all over, but they don't do anything like what you do.
You know, we are also working on a, that I didn't mention, a kids' network for nonprofits here in New Hanover County, so we can bring all the nonprofits that work with students together to try to work better with youth and to work better together, so that we serve these kids better. I'm retired and now, you know, I really love dedicating my life to trying to serve our community and something that you're passionate about, our kids.
Yeah, I thought this, when they brought it to me, it was, it was a no-brainer, so I wanted to bring it to you folks. Then I'll get the paperwork to Wayne to review for any legal issues, but we'll be back for approval next month.
I will mention, too, that, you know, because I know there's always legal issues. We have, of course, a waiver form we sign, we care liability insurance. I'm a travel agent, so I have a travel agent insurance, and we make sure every child has travel insurance, so we have like four levels of protection.
How many kids do you take?
Usually 12 to 20.
Once a year?
Once a year.
I think it's great. I mean, I did the same thing that you did with my children when they graduated, I said, "Where do you want to go? Let's go." And years ago, through the school system, we used to have the ability to travel, and that was stopped, and I always wanted that to come back, because I think it's, there's, it's different when you're traveling with your peers, with students, and with your teachers. I just think it's a different way to travel, and they open your eyes in a different way, so, but I really appreciate what you're doing, both of you, and the fact that you're standing up here and presenting this, I'm very excited about it, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'd like to say I found him, but he found me.
Item B, strengthening support for EL students, has my name, but I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hannah Marable, who is one of our scholarship award winners. So, thank you, welcome back.
Thank you so much for allowing me to present today. Good evening, my name is Hannah Marable. I'm a Wilmington native and graduate of New Hanover County Schools. I'm a UNC Chapel Hill student and a recipient of the Board of Education Scholarship for future teachers. After graduation, I plan to stay at UNC Chapel Hill to complete a Masters of Arts in Teaching and become licensed as both an elementary and ESL teacher, then return to New Hanover County Schools to fulfill my scholarship. I'm invested in our schools, I have been since the first day of kindergarten in Ms. Wolf's class, and continue to be with my research this summer and my desire to return to the county to teach. I've spent the summer studying methods for supporting English learner EL students. I conducted 17 interviews with educators around the state and learned what is working for different schools in different places. I conducted the majority of my interviews in Chapel Hill, Carbo, for several reasons. First, I was based there, I had access to teachers, administrators, and my research advisor. Further, the town of Chapel Hill has a large immigrant population, nearly 17 percent of residents, and the school system has long allocated resources towards serving large numbers of immigrant students with some of the first dual-language programs in the state. I also studied a dual-language program in Alamance County, as well as visited Doris Henderson Newcomer School in Guilford County, a transitional school for immigrant and refugee newcomers to receive intensive English language instruction and to learn to acclimate to American public schools. I acknowledge that North Carolina school systems vary widely in terms of demographics, programs, and resources. However, I'm excited to share what I have heard this summer, strategies from around the state to consider, to consider how we might build on current support for EL students in this county. New Hanover County is experiencing significant growth in the number of English learners, students who speak a language other than English at home, and newcomer students, students who speak a language other than English at home and are attending a US school for the first time. From the 2017, 2018 to the 2018, 2019 school year, we added more than 300 English learner students, represented by the blue line, and approximately 130 of which were new to the county and new to English. These are newcomer students represented by the green line. Let's get an idea of how ELs are doing statewide. The data in this table is drawn from North Carolina's English Learner Progress Report for the 2017, 2018 school year. This report provides the total percent of ELs exiting or making progress towards exiting the EL designation according to the state's accountability measures. The first column displays total EL progress. These are EL students that exited or made progress towards exiting the EL designation. The second column shows the percentage of students that exited EL status within the time mandated by the state. I've included averages for the state of North Carolina, our southeast region, which includes 11 other counties, and averages for the second and third largest counties in our region in terms of population, Brunswick and Wayne. We fall below the state and regional average in total EL progress and percentage exiting EL status. I want to highlight a few points. The state and regional percentage of students meeting progress goals is 44.9 percent and 44.7 percent respectively. The New Hanover County Schools' percentage of students meeting progress goals is lower, at 43.8 percent. Further, the state and regional percentages of students meeting exit requirements within the time mandated by the state are 7.1 and 6.6 respectively, while New Hanover County Schools experiences 4.5 percent of students exiting the designation in the time mandated by the state, the lowest of the rates for the southeast region. I share these numbers to demonstrate how both our county and the state as a whole has room to grow. has room to grow. This is a county-wide, statewide, and nationwide challenge. Now that we have reached an understanding of how our EL population is growing and how our ELs are doing compared to the rest of the region and to North Carolina, we are poised to consider strategies from around the state. We have an opportunity to build on pre-existing support for EL students. We are so fortunate to have the Immersion Program at Gregory and to be opening a Mandarin Immersion Program. We have wonderful ESL teachers and parent liaisons that work tirelessly to ensure the well-being of our EL students and families. We are investing in racial equity training with a workshop on Thursday. I am proud of the work we are doing here. Let's continue to be a county that leads. Let's ensure that we are providing every child in the county with an opportunity for superior education, as the mission statement suggests, by acknowledging the strategies for supporting EL students. I've organized my findings into five recommendations based on my research with teachers and administrators across the state. We know that students, parents, and teachers are critical pillars in supporting student success. They work together to create an environment in which the student can thrive. Thus, if we strengthen each pillar, the support system will grow. The first three recommendations address students, teachers, and parents. Then I will discuss the Immersion Program as a tool to close the achievement gap. Finally, I will propose the formation of a team, a task force, to work to implement solutions for English learner students. As I mentioned, the EL population as a whole is experiencing significant growth, but especially the newcomer group. Last year, we saw a seventy-six percent increase in our newcomer population from one hundred and seventy students to three hundred students. As we anticipate more growth, let's consider one strategy from Northside Elementary School in Chapel Hill, newcomer classrooms. This could be a model to explore here. Chapel Hill Carboro Schools have created standalone classrooms for newcomer students at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Newcomers are students that are attending a US school for the first time and speak a language other than English at home. Rather than have newcomers dispersed throughout district schools, district schools, I would recommend that they be, that they be clustered at three schools, one elementary, one middle, and one high school. Once they meet the program's exit criteria, based not only on language, but on math and literacy as well, they are transitioned to their home schools into traditional ESL programming. This allows the best newcomer teachers to pool their resources, time, and skills in teaching students with the least English ability. I've included Katie Jing's contact, a newcomer teacher at Northside Elementary School in Chapel Hill, who has offered to share materials and ideas from her program and wants to be a resource for our county. Schools around the state have placed an emphasis on hiring bilingual and bicultural employees, certainly in Guilford County and in Orange County, as I learned from my interviews. If New Hanover County Schools' applications do not have this, I suggest that we add a bilingual hiring policy that includes fluency in another language as a preferred skill for applicants. Many industries around the state, including law enforcement, are offering pay raises to bilingual employees. While parent liaisons work tirelessly to mediate between families and the school, they are completely overextended in their responsibilities. An emphasis on hiring bilingual employees in our county will allow families that speak a language other than English to communicate more effectively with teachers and be more engaged in their child's education. I'm excited to discuss executive parent groups. Executive parent groups are parent groups like the PTA but emphasize cultural responsiveness. Carboro Elementary School has three executive parent groups, Rise, an African-American parent group, Mujeres Unidas en Accion, Women United in Action, a Hispanic family group, and Sunrise Myanmar Parent Group, which includes families from Myanmar. These groups operate differently than a traditional PTA. They often have a soft start time and use unique communication methods like word of mouth or WhatsApp. Parents are able to participate in a way that feels comfortable to them, especially parents who are English learners themselves. They have a platform to raise issues in their own language that are shared with the school improvement team representative that attends the meeting each month and brings back concerns to the team. The groups empower parents to lead and play an active role in their child's education. When parents plan events that they are excited about and feel their community will be excited about, people show up. For example, Mujeres Unidas organized a Spanish movie night, an event to share Hispanic culture with the entire school. This strategy has the power to not only increase the engagement of EL parents, but all parent groups. Executive parent groups can be a huge asset to our school system. The contact person for this strategy is Katie Harrison, the social worker at Carboro Elementary School. She is happy to help, even offering to present before the board about executive parent groups and their success at her school. I know I'm standing in front of a board that believes in dual language. You have shown that with your support of the Immersion Program at Gregory and the opening of a Mandarin Immersion Program, but I want to emphasize one point. According to dual-language scholars Thomas and Collier's study of North Carolina dual-language programs, though all groups benefit greatly from participation in dual-language programming, African-American and EL students benefit the most. These are charts from Thomas and Collier's study of North Carolina dual-language schools that display EOG reading achievement. EL students are on the left and African-American students are on the right. Red bars represent dual-language students. Blue bars represent non-dual-language students. Dual-language students from both groups at every grade level outperform their non-dual-language peers. The graphs look very similar for achievement on the math EOG and other tests. If we contrast this with white students, EL and African-American students see more growth. Dual-language is a powerful tool to work to close the achievement gap that looms over every school district in America, but we need to ensure we are doing everything we can to offer this program to African-American and EL students. We need clear recruitment policies for families. A New Hanover County Schools faculty member shared with me that there are many myths that must be dispelled within the local Hispanic community about the program at Gregory. Many believe that the program costs money, does not offer transportation to the school, and that students are only learning Spanish. We must be proactive about disseminating information about the dual-language program to our local African-American and Hispanic communities. Gregory's Immersion Coordinator, Lena Espinoza, is working hard to reach these communities by putting up flyers in churches and community centers, as well as setting up booths at community festivals. Let's join in on the work she is doing. Having a dual-language program, and now too, is an amazing resource. Let's fine-tune our program so that it can be used most effectively to combat the achievement Finally, I propose that the board agrees to form an implementation team to carry out the work I've begun this summer. This team would continue to explore strategies to build on the strong support for EL students that exist in this county and work to implement solutions that are feasible, effective, and appropriate. I want to charge the team to consider the recommendations I have offered and use their expertise to come to conclusions about the next steps for caring for EL students. I have reached out to teachers, parents, and administrators about being part of this team and have already found a handful of people who are excited to back this effort. This is only the start. As I close, I am a student. My job is to learn. I don't have all the answers, but I do have a good understanding of what is working for EL teachers, students, and families in North Carolina. I'm excited to see how New Hanover County continues to lead in its support for English learners. I want to be a part of steps New Hanover County Schools takes towards strengthened support for EL students. This call is close to my heart. I would like to dedicate my presentation to the twenty-two dead and two dozen wounded in the anti-immigrant violence in El Paso on Saturday. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you today. Thank you. Are there any questions?
That was impressive. Good job.
Thank you.
Hannah, before you go, make sure you get up with Dr. Smith. She will actually introduce you to our district's EL person and make sure that they, this information gets shared across.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's what I was going to ask you, if you had talked to anybody here in the schools locally on the district level to get the information about, because some of the things that you were talking about, I guess you could say like the three centers for the newly, uh...
The newcomer students.
Newcomer students.
Yes.
Um, I'm not familiar necessarily with this district, but having worked in other districts, they have pullouts in the schools that are very similar within the school setting, so they're not separated from their families, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I mean, that's why I've been having a discussion with somebody from the district to see what we are doing here to try to provide that kind of service in individual schools, if you had done that.
Yes, ma'am. I talked to, um, teachers and, and administrators within the school system to try to understand what the school system is doing, because I know we're already doing a lot, so I wanted to acknowledge that before I made my recommendations. But I also just wanted to share what the rest of the state is doing as information for you all to think about next steps going forward.
Well, one of the things I noticed, the Chapel Hill Carboro School District is very different from ours in their EL students, because I lived in that area, in the Durham area.
Yes, ma'am.
And their, their population is very different from our population.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, in fact, most of those students are coming in because of the influence of the universities, and so when they enter the program, their, their familiarity with formal education is much different from what's going on here in our district.
Yeah.
That's going to make a big difference when you're comparing them with us. It's a little bit difficult to actually do that stretch in some ways, so...
Yes, ma'am. I understand. I tried to keep those differences in mind as I, as I did my research to just try to understand what schools across the state are doing. That's why I mentioned that I, um, studied a dual-language program in Alamance County as well as in Guilford County.
Right.
But I, I do understand the differences and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, by the way, this is great. You did a great job.
Thank you.
And you a lot of, and thank you, thank you for caring enough to want to do this kind of work for our district.
Hannah, how close are you to graduation?
Uh, I'm a junior, so I have to...
Yeah, it's not that far.
Yeah.
But then masters.
Yes, the ma- okay, three years, three years. You'll have to wait.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Yeah. But, but like the Reverend said in his prayer, I just want to give a voice to, to people and students that don't always have a voice, so I hope that I could do that today.
Thank you very much. The former board placed its money in a wonderful resource. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I, I thank you for the dedication as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you.
Now, Hannah, you got some folks with you for, for support back there?
Um, yeah. I do. Um, these are my parents. This is Jan and Ned. Um, these are my friends, Lindsay here, and they also went to Canada. And, um, this is my other family. This is my wife and family, so this is his parents, Jamie and Elizabeth, and, um, my friend and sister Kate, who also just graduated from Indiana, who's about to go to Champaign. So, yeah, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, Superintendent's Report.
I think I've covered everything between recommendations and Dustin's Greenhouse.
Okay. Uh, item ten, Board Chairperson's Report. I would like to congratulate, uh, someone that, um, I have continuously messed up his title, but now it's official. This is his title, Lieutenant Granda. Congratulations. You are now an official lieutenant. I know I've been calling you that, so, but I do want to recognize you. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Uh, and I, I want to also give a quick update on Title, uh, the Title IX Committee. Um, we, as, as I think Mr. Boyer said earlier, we've been doing some really great work there. Obviously, the most exciting thing for us is that we, um, now have a Title IX Director and, um, we're very excited and can't wait for him to, um, come get to work. Last time, we, we, um, worked mainly on policy. Next time, we're going to work on our subcommittee work. Uh, we did try Facebook Live for the first time, um, and we had a little bit of struggle with sound, so we're going to move to the TV station and, um, and also have that through the TV. Um, so hopefully that will address the sound issue, but we will, um, have that available so anyone that wants to, to watch, uh, and that's on the, I think, the sixteenth, it's this coming up Monday. Um, so, uh, I'm sorry, August twelfth, excuse me. So, um, everyone, please tune in. Uh, the discussion is always very robust. We have a great group, um, from across the county, a lot of different community organizations. So, um, that's it for that update and for my report. Item eleven, Committee Reports, Other Committee Reports of Policy. Ms. Janette Nichols.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, if you'll recall, at our last board meeting, we gave you, um, some suggested changes to the student dress code, and as we talked about it, it was determined that perhaps we should go back to the board, to the committee, and, um, get input. Well, we did. We had ninety-some responses from on, online. Um, many people have talked to me. We talked to the administrators at the retreat. We have a compilation of thoughts from the elementary principals, from the middle school, and I'm sure we're going to hear from the, uh, high school principals soon. The, the thought, this is a very, very complex policy.
Yes, it is.
In today's society, how do we have a policy that addresses the needs for professionalism, safety, respect, individuality, and freedom of choice? So it's a lot to think about. We won't please everybody when we, um, finally come to a consensus of our dress code. One of the, the requests was that because school is nearly, is near the beginning and the handbooks are online with this existing policy, that we not make changes now, because it would be very confusing to the students and the parents. Um, so, and with all the redistricting and the moving, it makes more sense to have it for next year. The, um, concerns that, of enforcing the dress code, and it shouldn't be punitive, it should be, I'm glad that we have a dress code. I'm glad that I can come to school and represent my family and my community in a fashion that says, I'm here to be educated. So this is very complex. We appreciate all the input. I know we'll continue to get input. Uh, you have before you all of the, um, comments, and I would like to say too, every comment was in a professional, um, suggestion. Everyone realizes that this is a big responsibility for all of us, so look through it, read it. Mr. Robenbark and I will certainly study it. We'll work with the committee as well as the board and the community and our schools to see what we can come up with that will address the need for a student dress code. Thank you.
Um, during some of the email conversations, there was a suggestion about setting up an actual separate committee to look at, uh, the dress code policy. I know that, I think Pender County did that a couple of years ago and was quite successful because there was so much community input. It was a buy-in. It's not just a matter of a couple, you know, our, our policy committee, but actual dress code committee. Is that something that anybody I could, has brought up besides that conversation?
It's the will of the board, if that's what the board wants. At this point, I think the committee as well as central office administrators and, uh, maybe some representatives from the schools that could come in and elaborate on the needs.
I think the principals are wanting to get more involved. The principals are wanting to get more involved in it.
Yes, they do, and they should.
The night...
It's their, it, it impacts their school and their children, and so this is a policy that, as I said, is a real challenge.
So maybe a committee would be more appropriate so that more, well, folks can't even talk about...
But they want, it depends on the committee, because you have to be close to the situation to be able to...
Correct, yeah.
You have so much time now, there's, I mean, if we're going to implement it for the next school year, then we can invite principals to come into the policy committee to get their feeling, correct?
And we, just on that particular focus, so we could have a special session with them.
They're the ones that will have to enforce it.
That's why I'm saying a committee with some, some principals, teachers, community members on it would probably be, as I said, is a buy-in if you want people to agree, if they're more involved than just, you know, the policy committee is a separate thing from dress code itself. If we had that input from a separate group of people that have got so much invested, and this is a very serious thing, you're right. It's very serious.
Oh, absolutely. And we need consistency in how we're going to go about, uh, holding our students responsible. But, and of course, there was that thread through it about... And of course, there was that thread through it about the ID cards.
Oh, I saw that in there, too.
And that's another thought that we've got to come up with, you know. Are they working? Do they, you know, how many students really wear them? Are, are we holding them accountable? There are a lot of things that we need to think about. So, we do need input, and we need support from those that are affected at the school level, and certainly some student representatives.
Well...
Uh, we got, the young man who came and spoke tonight certainly has submitted something for, uh, our consideration.
I just worry that now it'll be, you know, this weekend, our students are going back to school shopping. We put this out there. We asked for their input, and we got hundreds of comments. Most of them were overwhelmingly positive and in support of at least some of these changes. Um, and, I mean, I am personally comfortable, uh, moving forward with, with something, because, as I said, they're going shopping this weekend.
Well...
It hasn't even come out of the policy committee yet.
I thought that was what we were doing last week, was to get the input.
It goes back to policy, I think the procedure, it went back to the policy committee two weeks ago, but it has to come out of the policy committee to vote on.
My daughter went to, all, all the way through the system, just graduated last year. She wore shorts, wore blue jeans, and a Hager soccer shirt. Never had the first problem. What is so hard about that?
Mine got dress coded all the time. So, I mean, having tall girls with long legs, I can tell you, it's not easy.
Okay.
And so...
That's an, that's an exception.
Well, yeah, but there are a lot...
You can make exce- you can make exceptions.
But they don't make exceptions. You have, you have Summit, you have an AP that decides, "I'm gonna dress code that long-legged girl, but I'm not gonna dress code that boy."
Then that's our job to fix it.
But I, I can't go to the school and fix it, so...
No, no, no. We, we need to fix it as a board.
Well, I'm also gonna dress code that boy who decides to wear a dress, but I'm not gonna dress code that girl who's wearing a suit and tie.
We need to...
And that's a problem, too.
When we need to fix it. I mean, I don't think we got that many problems. We just got a few problems that stick out more than others.
Which I have hundreds of people responding when we put it...
Yeah, but we have hundreds of people responding when we put it out there. Obviously, we have people who care a lot about this.
Well, we have a problem.
It's not a small thing. It's a big thing.
It is a big thing.
That's why I was suggesting a committee with more in-depth look at it over time, getting community, since we do have time if we do, do it next year. Uh, as I said, Pender County did it. I think they have a really good, I'm trying to remember, somebody came up to me, was talking about the model that they went through to, to put it in place. They could put the committee in place and get input. They did surveys. So, as I said, when it was done, all was said and done, people were satisfied with it, because it was something that was a buy-in from the whole community.
Well, if you think you're gonna get the whole community to agree to something, you ain't gonna find another job.
Well, a lot better. I, I, you're never gonna get the whole community to agree on anything.
If you look at what we have specifically right now through the end of the year, we have redistricting. So, I think that, I think the community's really gonna focus on redistricting and the maps. You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do something and want to start a committee to, to, for, for next year, it may be better to wait till January, until we get redistricting done. This way, we, because it is...
Well, that makes sense. I agree.
We can focus on that. But I think if you over, if you have a committee after committee after committee, and it, it takes away the focus on redi- so...
I actually agree. I actually agree. I don't think we need a committee to address this issue. I just don't. I mean, if you want to address it in, in January another time, that's, that's one thing. I don't think we need a committee to address this, because I know what the community thinks, and we all know what the community thinks. This is about what is best for our students.
With all due respect, when you say you, you know what the community thinks, I've heard from the principals, I've heard from, from law enforcement, and I've heard from a lot of parents, too, that have their own opinions, so...
Right.
So, yeah, there is, yeah, so there...
I'm sorry, I know there's a lot of variance of opinion.
Right, varying opinion, yeah. So, that would be, that would be a reason why, if you do have a varying of opinion, to have those groups come together and kind of develop a...
I appreciate all the things that they have given us and told us, but I still think that this is about, how can our kids be comfortable going to class?
Well, I think they can be comfortable with enough covering that they are, well, when we sat in a meeting the other day, it was so cold, and I thought, "Boy, I know these people are glad that they are not wearing spaghetti straps."
Yeah, but when you're in a trailer in the back of a school, and it's burning hot, and you have to wear jeans, um, we also have to consider that, too.
Oh, I know.
And the, the principals are not in the back in that trailer. They're in, they're in the office. So, we have to consider the comfort of the students and balance that with the comfort of the principals. So, we, we have to have that discussion.
Oh, absolutely.
So, if we can, um, we have to, I, I, I think waiting a whole school year does seem like a lot. Um, so how do we, how do we kind of meet in the middle on this?
Madam Chair, I would make a suggestion that we put together a committee, that I, we could then, would make recommendations to the policy committee. Uh, Mr. Boyu and Ms. Justice seem to be very passionate, uh, about this. I'd be happy to work with those two to put together a committee, spend the year doing it. Matt, who came to my office, I'd love to have him work with us as a, as a student rep and put those recommendations together.
I would like to try to get this in place, at the very least, by the springtime, when it's a hundred and fifty degrees again.
Do we, are our buildings without air conditioning? And I understand what we're saying, we're outside, but I feel like we have.
All of our, all of our buildings are... Unless Eddie's mechanics aren't working that day, they're all air-conditioned.
But is it safe to say that they vary? The air conditioning, depending on the room that you're in, depending on where you are in the building, it totally varies. So, I mean, you, you can be in one room, and you're wearing a sweater, and then you go into, you know, the different part of the building. I mean, I, I know that's how Hager is. I know that's how Roland Grace was. Now, with the, the changes, I'm, well, some of the, some of the changes, some of the parts have changed. But, um, but yeah, I mean, I'd say set it up and see how, how, how well you can, you can gather that input and gather that data.
I would also ask, um, because of all the comments I've seen, I've never seen it, none of these comments said, maybe one, like, "Leggings are unacceptable." I'd ask policy to at least remove that word. Allow these kids to put leggings on and go to school.
With all due respect, Nelson, the first comment says, "Policy should not allow spaghetti straps, tank tops, nor should the policy allow leggings." First comment. I understand what you're saying, but there are more people than just your one person.
Sexist dress codes don't help the community.
Oh, yeah. You're the first, the first, you said one, there's, the first one said that.
Yeah, okay.
So, there are, there is a varying opinion. I understand, I, I agree with some of the, like, what Ms. Step said and the student that came before us. Absolutely, we need to absolutely address those.
I'm, I'm happy to put that committee together, get the input. We'll do some focus groups for students, surveys. If Pender's got a survey that was useful, we can take a look at it.
Make sure there's a lot of principals and, uh, uh, high school and middle school principals on it.
Because ultimately, they're the ones that are gonna have to enforce it, and consistency would be great, and if they feel comfortable with the dress code, the consistency would most likely happen.
Consistency, because you hear from, you know, you had the issue at Hager that people were getting dress code, but then we also had someone come up here today and said that at another high school, it was never enforced. So, we do need to make it consistent, um, among the high schools. I'd agree, and, you know, there obviously needs, I think there does need to be things added into, into the dress code or, uh, addressed, but, um...
We're really looking at two things. One is the code, one is the dress code, and then working with, once we have a code, procedures for, the, the procedure piece that goes with it.
Again, not punitive, but figuring out a way.
Yes.
I know when I was a high school principal, we would take the morning, it could be an all-day thing to be chasing dress code violations.
Oh, yeah.
We would use the first period. If there was an issue, send them down during that first period, we'd take a look at it, uh, and work from there. So, there's, there are some procedures you can put into place that would, that can help with that, but I'd be happy to put a group together and take an in-depth look at this.
Thank you for that, Dr. Markley.
I volunteered to board, ma'am, but I don't want to...
Fine, I'm fine doing that. And honestly, I've had a lot of experience with that, unfortunately, like you, if you want to say it that way, because it can be very hot.
For make sure you don't have a principal that's on board and our assistant principal is not.
No.
I actually think it's better to have, uh, have opposite opinions, because then you, you draw somewhere into the middle.
Right.
So, um...
But if one of them drags them into office, and the other one says...
He's talking about enforcing it. At, at the, at the end of the day, if, it's, if you got a principal and assistant principal, the principal's gonna make that call.
Yeah.
Yep.
I love my assistant principals, but, uh, you paid me to be the principal and I was principal.
But I, I mean, my kids were never dress coded by the principal. It was always the assistant principal or teacher.
That's what I'm talking about. Let's get it fixed where everybody's on board.
Yeah.
No, and that's, I think that's the important thing, maintaining some consistency.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it should be, it, it should be genderless, yeah.
Well, thank you, Dr. Markley, for that, organizing the committee, and we look forward to, um...
Yeah, Al doesn't know it, but he picked up some extra work.
But we do appreciate everyone who took the effort to share their thoughts.
And I think you start with all of the comments that are, that are currently there.
Yes.
There are lots, lots.
I do want to thank Matt back there. Uh, he spoke during the public comments. He actually came to my office, sat with the board chair and I, and, uh, it takes a lot of courage to, to come down to the central office and have that conversation. And Mr. Verlines, his principal, his new principal was there, so...
Okay.
Next.
Are we, so that's, that's all for our policy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think that was enough.
Yeah, I think so. Item twelve, consensus items. Item A, personnel. Appendix K, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. Item B, change of school assignment appendix to L, Dr. Markley.
I'd ask that the board approve the, uh, allowing these students to attend school out of county where their parents are employed.
Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Typically, you would see a, a budget amendment approval here, but we don't have a state budget, so we don't have that item.
Well, we'll look forward to that next month.
Let's hope so.
I'm sure. Item thirteen, new business. Item A, athletic fields maintenance service contract. Appendix N, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're asking, uh, the board's approval for the maintenance field, or the athletic field maintenance service contract. This includes lawn and turf maintenance, uh, weed and pest control for all of our middle and high school athletic fields. Uh, the recommended award is to Sweetwater Landscaping LLC for a total of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, you'll note that that is prorated for eleven months, um, and we have the annual contract shown, as well as, uh, the renewal options for the next four years. We're asking for your approval tonight for year one.
Yes, this, this, it's like the Hager football field?
Yes, sir.
And, and he's gonna make the soccer field look like it did when football started in the first of the year?
The soccer field?
With the football field.
Which, uh...
Do you remember how it looked a couple of years ago, when it, you know, they couldn't play on it?
Well, we've, we've put sod on that field since then.
And he's gonna keep it like that?
He's gonna keep it like that.
Okay.
Is Sweetwater, is, uh, did they have the contract before, or was it a different vendor?
Uh, Sweetwater is the contractor that's had the contract for the last several years. Um, the athletic directors, uh, were part of the selection committee, um, in reviewing the, the bid, although they were the only ones to bid. Um, we, we actually reached out, um, even to as far away as, you know, Fayetteville and Raleigh and, and other counties. But, but the athletic directors are very pleased with the, uh, service that Sweetwater Landscape has, uh, given us. Uh, it wasn't, uh, reaching out for competitive bids, had nothing to do with their performance. Uh, it was just in an effort to solicit competitive bids.
Mr. Anderson, we, two year, a couple of years ago, we talked about, um, looking into turf on some of those schools, um, Hager, Lane, it was when Hager was having its issues. Um, have we looked into if, if turf has gone down in price or, or anything like that? Do we, do we know?
I haven't looked at that lately. Yeah, I know it was, uh, we were thinking it was, uh, a million dollars a field, uh, at the la- last time we spoke about it.
Similar to Brunswick, then Brunswick.
Brunswick's doing it right now, right?
But the figure I saw in the paper, it was like nine hundred thousand dollars.
Approximately, it's about a million dollars a field.
Yeah, but it was down a hundred thousand, what they had in the paper.
Between eight and a million.
Doesn't that damage the students? Is there a higher rate of injury, too, when you do turf?
There, you, you think of maintenance as being, uh, turf being maintenance-free. It's not. There are some injuries that are turf-specific. There are issues with the way it heats up, but it, it's, there are annual maintenance costs that goes with turf, and I'll turn that over. I'll let Eddie talk more about those, as the expert.
Yeah, there are, there are some costs, uh, there'd be some initial costs with different equipment that's needed, um, and there is some annual maintenance cost. Um, there, I'm not sure that all of our athletic directors and as a school system, we're all in agreement that, uh, athletic, or, or artificial turf would be the best route. Um, and then there's some that, uh, if we put artificial turf on the, um, competition fields, uh, there's some concern about practicing on natural turf and playing on artificial turf and the differences and the, and the increase for, uh, potential injury with that as well, so...
What about Hanover? Hanover does that?
They do.
Do you see increased inju- injuries with Hanover?
I could check with their athletic director, and, you know, I think that, uh...
That'd be a good representative to see.
I, I would actually see the opposite. I mean, the, the problem that I've always seen is, you know, on the natural fields, you've got a lot of bumps and holes, and we've had kids with injuries there.
Those are where kids get hurt.
Yeah, because you can't, you can't see all those, all those holes and bumps on a turf field. Um, it's straight and smooth. And so, I mean, you're, you're trading one sort of injury for another, maybe, if you, if you develop turf toe or whatever, but you've, you've got that smooth playing surface, so, you know, my kids have, yeah, my kids have played.
We can ask our athletic trainers to give us a, a breakdown on, on that, that data that we've had.
I think we talked about it before. The life of the turf was ten years. Life of sod was seven years, um, when we looked at it before. If you do the quick math on it, you know, you're doing maintenance of four million dollars, four hundred thousand a year. Um, so that's four million dollars of maintenance. I don't know if it make, I don't know if it makes sense, but I think that it's something that we can look at, because Hanover does it. Um, if we find that the injuries are, there's no more injuries or less injuries at Hanover than there is the, the other schools, um, it, I think it provides a more consistent playing field, um, especially we, with Hager's field last year. We all know what happened in the springtime. Um, but we might as well as look at it, you know. I don't think it's hard to look at.
I think, um, that we should first go back to the athletic directors and get a recommendation from them, um, is, if, uh, if that's, and then we can look at it from a cost standpoint.
I think we should, we should tell them that we're considering this.
Yep.
Um, because to me, it, it also increases, you know, we've, we've got athletes that can't play, um, on those, on those wet fields when they become wet, because they get pulled off. So, if they're on turf, they can play. So, it also increases their ability to be on those fields, um, as we know, so...
And winter times, we know, winter time, springtime sports, when they start practicing in the beginning of January, and there's no grass, and they're playing on bare dirt.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
So, I still need a motion on this one to approve this?
Oh, move.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item B, Sunset Park polling places usage agreement. Appendix O, Eddie Anderson.
Yes, thank you. We, um, we had the polling places agreement approved last month, and since that time, the Board of Election, um, had some problems in the Sunset Park area, and are, are asking that we, uh, add Sunset Park as a polling, uh, place. So, the, uh, usage agreement is attached, and we ask for your approval on that agreement tonight.
Is this for the two thousand and nineteen election or the two thousand twenty election? Or both?
Both, I believe.
Yeah, this, this agreement is, uh, in effect until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Move for approval?
Then it could be extended at that time with, uh, written consent of both parties.
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item C, North Carolina Education Lottery applications for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty capital construction projects. Appendix P, Eddie Anderson. Item C, North Carolina Education Lottery Applications for Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Capital Construction Projects Appendix P, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you. Tonight, we request approval of those 2019-2020 capital construction projects that are to be funded by the North Carolina Education Lottery. These projects are consisted with the capital budget that was submitted and the project specifically are cooling tower replacement at Laney, phase three renovations at Sea Tech High School, miscellaneous system replace, replacements at Mini Evans Performing Arts and the chiller replacement at Carolina Beach Road Complex. We ask for your approval tonight. Assuming these are approved, we would then go to the county commissioners and then this would be submitted to State DPI for final approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item D, Wilmington Health Access for Teens by Coastal Horizons Appendix Q, Dr. Markley.
This is a renewal of our contracts with the what clinics that are in our high schools. They have done amazing work over the years. So, I would ask that we continue to, our, our work with them and approve the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Is this a, the same contract? Any changes?
No changes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item E, Nursing Contract Appendix R, Julie Askew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are asking for the board's approval on the nursing contract for our one-to-one pediatric nurses for students with significant medical conditions. We just concluded our three-year request for proposals process and have chosen to present the award for contract to you with interim healthcare.
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Is this the, is this a, the same healthcare provider?
It's the same agency we've used for the past three years, yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, 2019-2020 Ashley Marine Science Memorandum of Understanding with the, with UNCW Appendix S, Dr. LaShawn Smith.
Yes, would ask for the board's approval of the MOU with, between Ashley High School and the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. This is a continuation of the existing MOU. There are not, no major changes to this MOU and it simply outlines the responsibilities of the school district in regards to this partnership as well as the responsibilities of UNCW.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How's the enrollment for the Marine Science program at Ashley this year? Do we know?
I do not know those exact numbers, but I can check on it and get back to you.
It has gone up though.
I know, I saw, I remember.
Yeah, they got a new, the new director they put in place has done a, done a good job.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Memorandum, item G, Memorandum of Understanding between New Hanover Regional Medical Center and New Hanover High School for the Emergency Medical Training Program Appendix T, Dr. Smith.
Yes, this actually is a brand-new MOU with the New Hanover Regional Medical Center. And this, again, just as the previous MOU did, identifies the roles and relationship between New Hanover County Schools and New Hanover Regional Medical Center as it relates to providing New Hanover High School students the opportunity to participate in the EMT training.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Second?
Second.
So, will they walk out with, will they walk out fully credentialed or would they have to go on to, to further training?
Let me defer to Ms. Schufert.
So, students will be given an opportunity to sit for that particular credential, but it will be based on their performance in the class. So, if they meet all requirements within that class and pass all modules, they can be fully certified.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We had a motion and a second, did we not? We did, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item H, Curriculum Guide Updates Appendix U, Dr. Smith.
Yes, we would ask for the board's approval of the curriculum course guide updates. We are adding some additional courses specifically in the areas of computer science, drone technology, and CTE.
And accounting.
Yes. And accounting, yes.
And accounting. I'm sure that's gonna be a big winner. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just now, now that we're talking about drones, we are working on a drones policy.
Yes.
That we'll be bringing to the board at some point.
All right.
Very timely.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item I, credit in lieu, credit in lieu of for CTE credentials, Appendix V, Dr. Smith.
Yes, we would ask for the board's approval for this item, credit in lieu of career and technical education credentials. And it's, we're very excited about this opportunity and essentially what it allows our students to do. CTE students who earn a credential that is approved under the Department of Public Instruction guidelines as evidence of technical skill attainment will not be required to sit for that CTE post-assessment course. So, they will not have to take that assessment. So, we're really excited. Now, this will require change in our policy, but we, we, we think that this is gonna be something that's gonna be very well received.
So, basically, what you're saying is that they already demonstrate the skill. They don't have to go through a course in order to learn something they already know.
Yeah, well, they go through the course, but they don't have to take the test. So, they demonstrate the technical knowledge and so then we don't give them a test at the end. So, we're very excited about that, yes, very much so.
Makes perfect sense.
So, will this affect all CTE courses or how many?
We will defer to Ms. Schufert yet again.
So, currently, within career and technical education, we have 58 courses that students are able to sit for a specific credential and in the 2019-20 academic year, we'll have 59 courses. And these are in direct alignment with the courses that are listed in lieu of the North Carolina Department of Public Construction.
So, this will affect all 59?
All 59 of those courses. The students will have an option to sit for that particular credential.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schufert.
Item J, Local Phone Service, oh, wait, did we? We didn't go on, so, so sorry. I was rushing. So, is there a motion to approve item I?
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Now, moving on to item J, Local Phone Service Contract Appendix W, Dawn Brinson.
Yes, request the board approve the contract, the local phone service. You're approving basically two different ones. One is for the voice-over IP and one's for the existing legacy phone system. We will be phasing that out in the next couple of years. However, as we phase that system out, we still have to for life safety now until we can come up with other solutions, have some phone lines for all our life-saving devices at the schools for, you know, smoke alarms, fire detectors, the elevators, those will still have to have dedicated phone lines for now.
Move for approval? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Moving on to correspondence. Does anyone have any correspondence they would like to share? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. Item 15, announcements. A, the New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the summer school graduation ceremony on Friday, August 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Auditorium of Snipes Academy. Item B, the Title IX Committee of the Board of Education will meet on Monday, August 12th at 3:30 in the Board of Ed Center right here. The, item C, the Redistricting Committee of the Board of Education will meet on Tuesday, August 20th, 2019 at 3:30 in the Board of Ed Center. Item D, the New Hanover County Board of Edu, Education will hold, hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019 at 5:30 right here in the Board of Ed Center. And we do not need, I'm confirming, we do not need a closed session?
Nope.
Okay, so we will take that off. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move for adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.